To go out back into black and white and do what they were paid to do, what they wanted to do and what they signed up to do. And that's to keep us all safe.
City Councilman Mitchell Englander, an LAPD reservist, says more officers on patrol are especially needed now, following upticks in crime. So far this year, violent crime is up by more than 12% from the same period last year. Controller Ron Galperin adds that the city wastes money by using trained cops to fill these jobs.
We now do have the broad support necessary to make these changes and to put more police in our neighborhoods where they work every day to keep us safe.
In downtown LA, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Of those 620 sworn officers filling civilian jobs, more than 400 are said to be fully capable of patrolling city streets. Another international city is now closer than ever, as one more airline is cleared for takeoff at LAX. And this one is taking the passenger experience to a whole new level. Rasha Goel has more.
A smooth landing for Aer Lingus, the newest airline to join the LAX flight roster. Having operated here from 1999 to 2008, Aer Lingus now returns to LAX and offers direct service from Los Angeles to Dublin, Ireland.
An aircraft and a flight and a service is a measure of the relationship between Ireland and the West Coast. And particularly here in LA, we have a very strong relationship.
Our goal for LAX is very simple. Like to deliver a modern, efficient airport with a hospitality mindset while firmly training our eyes on safety and security.
Passengers on the inaugural flight were thrilled about the new route.
They make you feel at home more than like the other airlines do.
Brilliant. Everything was fine, like wifi, food meals, everything was fine.
And what made the flight even more exciting was that it was piloted by an all-female flight crew, something that we don't often get to see.
This is the first time in Aer Lingus that we've had three operational female crew working together. So that's, that means a lot to me. It's a really big deal.
In addition to value-based pricing, wifi for the entire duration of the flight, and free stopovers in Ireland, passengers also receive advantages when it comes to customs.
That you clear US Customs in Ireland before you begin your transatlantic journey home, which saves you time on arrival.
Officials say the Aer Lingus flight into LAX is the longest flight for the airline's entire network, nearing about 10 hours. From LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
This direct flight from Aer Lingus saves passengers between four and five hours if they had connecting flights. While the innovative plan providing free computers to families in need returns to South LA for its latest rollout, Gil Reyes has part two of his special report on the Our Cycle program and plans to improve it moving forward.
What are you gonna do is go around the corner here? Free computers are given away to families that need them most.
Oh, it's great. The kids are excited and so am I.
Around 100 families living near Budlong Elementary and Dancler Charter Schools received the giveaways, the latest to benefit from the Our Cycle LA program.
In many cases, this is their first technology that they're able to bring into their home, first piece of technology.
And you need it, right?
Yeah, it's, it's almost impossible nowadays to be able to do anything on a day-to-day basis without it.
Our Cycle takes old City of L.A. computers and instead of chucking them, upgrades them for disadvantaged families, Windows 7 and virus protection included. Credit multiple entities for that, including the nonprofit group Human IT. The city hires them for computer repairs.
It's a universal need, whether you're talking about senior citizens that need access to healthcare or young children that need access to computers to do their homework. Technology is just a universal need in this day and age.
Instead of being thrown away and building up waste in landfills, the city's general services department found space in a downtown LA warehouse to store thousands of broken or unusable city computers, so they can be refurbished.
An old street services storage area that we was not using, so it was great that we had the space to put them in there so they could facilitate this project.
And what a project so far. Hundreds of families from San Pedro, Baldwin Village, Koreatown, and more have entered the digital age since the pilot program launched a year ago. The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, led this rollout to help families bridge the digital divide.
Technology is not a nice-to-have anymore. It's absolutely a need-to-have. In fact, my daughter, you know, where she goes to school here in LA Unified School District, she's given assignments where she's expected to watch email, to get on Schoology, submit assignments online. And without having technology in the house, it becomes very difficult just to get ahead.
We need a computer. And I have my laptop. We have an old Dell that's probably, we probably need to turn in to be refurbished, but this will definitely help the family.
City leaders want Our Cycle rolled out to other parts of South LA and the San Fernando Valley. Mayor Eric Garcetti wants to prioritize the hiring of the homeless and the formerly incarcerated for thousands of civil service positions. But they'll need internet to look up jobs and apply. So the city is considering free wifi in homeless encampments and more.
Creating some hotspots at schools, at churches, at community-based organizations, so that these internet resources can be used actively.
We want to do them all over the district. The council president, Wesson Price, and I, we've been talking about this for months. And so we want to do a tour of the community, giving away computers with internet access as much as we can and as fast as they can be produced.
Another plan in the works is reducing the cost of wifi for Time Warner Cable customers of low income through partnerships.
Right now, you can get access to the internet for $15 a month, but we'd love to drive that cost even lower. And we'd love to find really creative ways, working with public libraries and others, to be able to bring internet right to where people are in their homes. And so we'll have some new news for you coming up on that.
So I'm hopeful that we have some big giants of business that want to partner with the city of LA and make this even a bigger and a better program.
And good news for many more families. We're told the LA City Council recently approved $117,000 in the upcoming city budget to continue this program. In South LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Our Cycle plans to give away even more computers in the weeks to come in Canoga Park and at Camp Wesson Summer Camp just before the kids go home. Well, LA's council member Nuri Martinez has been singled out as a Phenomenal Woman. The YWCA of Greater LA recognized her at its annual awards and fundraiser. Anna Marcos has more.
All things are possible in the lives of phenomenal women.
It was an event by women, for women, inspired by an organization created for women. The YWCA of Greater LA held its annual Phenomenal Woman Awards to honor those who are a driving force in LA's corporate, government, and philanthropy worlds.
This event was put together to assimilate powerful, confident, visionary women so that we might inspire each other.
Councilmember Nuri Martinez was one of three recipients.
And the wonderful thing about this event is you get to highlight some of the good work that women are doing across the city. And it's also coming together to raise money for the YWCA.
But hand-in-hand with inspiration, the event also served to highlight some of the challenges facing women. As model and actress Kathy Ireland, the event co-chair pointed out.
It splashed across the front page, Santa Barbara, a hub for sex trafficking. Heartbreaking that this atrocity occurs all over our world, all over our nation.
The point for many here is that if anyone can work on the challenges, it is these women, all movers and shakers in LA, whether they've won a Phenomenal Woman Award or not. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The two other Phenomenal Women Award recipients were Lisa Paulson, president and CEO of the Entertainment Industry Foundation, and Delilah Lanoy Harris, president of SMS Transportation Services. While the city of LA signs off on an official plan to reduce greenhouse emissions, South LA welcomes a new affordable housing complex, and pedestrian safety gets a boost thanks to a new traffic light at a busy Highland Park intersection. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council unanimously approved a motion by council member Paul Corretts to establish the city's official target of reducing its greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below 1990 levels by 2050, and directing city departments to create climate action plans to meet the interim goals set by Mayor Garcetti in his Sustainable City Plan. Los Angeles is already transitioning away from carbon-burning fuels and making major investments in clean energy technology. Councilmember Corretts was joined by other climate advocates at City Hall to promote his climate change plan.
The future of this gray city and frankly, the future of the rest of the world depends on our getting it right and doing it fast.
Community of Friends, a group that builds housing for low-income individuals and those living with mental illness, gathered with city leaders and the Hyde Park community recently to celebrate the groundbreaking of Silver Star Apartments, an affordable housing complex on West Boulevard in Hyde Park. Situated on a 30,000-square-foot site, the project will consist of a four-story contemporary style apartment building with 48 one-bedroom units. The development will be a special needs community targeting veterans who are homeless and living with mental illness.
This facility will be part of bringing back our neighborhood and making our neighborhood better than we founded it in.
A new traffic signal was recently installed in Council District 1 along North Figueroa and Avenue 55. Councilmember Gil Sadio identified the funds to allow the signal to be constructed and address the critical pedestrian safety needs along this heavily-used pedestrian and transit corridor. Sadio said safety is a top priority.
There is nothing more important, nothing more important than public safety. It's why we have government.
For more than 100 years, the Orthopedic Institute for Children has been dedicated to serving young patients across Los Angeles. LMR Eric Garcetti joined institute officials recently to celebrate a major step forward. Rich Samuels has more.
At the Orthopedic Institute, local children tried out the playground, a symbol of an optimistic future for young patients treated here every day. Doctors, patients, and LA Mayor Eric Garcetti recently celebrated a great step forward for the institute, LA's first ambulatory surgery center designed and built exclusively for children. CEO Dr. Anthony Scaduto couldn't wait to show it off.
This room is specifically designed to do orthopedic surgery. It would be surgery that is state-of-the-art. There's special design features to this operating room that allows us to treat many of our children on an outpatient basis.
We've got six pre-op, post-op rooms to use, and the last room also is a procedure room, so we can do things like apply casts and do minor procedures.
I don't know if I've been in a medical facility that looks so gorgeous and that is designed with both the patients and the doctors and the way that they serve in mind.
And thanks to the city of Los Angeles, the surgery center became a reality in record time.
Normally, the state's health planning agency oversees construction of this kind, but this center is one of the first healthcare projects in California that was completely overseen at the municipal level.
What did municipal oversight mean? The permitting process, for example, which can take as long as 11 months, was reduced to just five. The Orthopedic Institute for Children treats a number of orthopedic specialties, ranging from muscular dystrophy and club foot to sports injuries, common fractures, and hand trauma. With 13,000 square feet of new space, there's plenty of room to meet the demand. This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
More than 2 million children have been treated by the institute since 1911. Well, it's a top honor by one of the top Democratic Clubs in California. Mayor Eric Garcetti was one of several leaders honored by the Stonewall Democratic Club. Anna Marcos has more on how the mayor's work in the LGBT community earned him the award.
They're called the Stony Awards, a sort of humanitarian of the year award for LGBT issues. And this year, our own Mayor Eric Garcetti has clinched one of them as Elected Official of the Year. The reason, his creation of a council of transgender community leaders to help advise the city on transgender issues.
We don't have to read about history of the LGBTQ movement in other places. It's right here. This is the fulcrum. This is Asselma, Alabama.
The Stonewall Democratic Club has become a force to be reckoned with in politics. It focuses on LGBT and women's rights, but also helps lead the way on all democratic issues of equality and justice.
We will also continue to hold our elected representatives accountable on environmental issues, affordable and accessible housing, healthcare access, immigration reform, and fair wages, because all of those things are LGBTQI issues.
What a hell of a year to be a Democrat and a lesbian and a feminist and a progressive.
Other Stony Awards went to LA County Assessor Jeffrey Prang, chosen as Public Official of the Year, and Rabbi Denise Egger, who took the Sheila Kuehl Trailblazer Award.
I've served our community, the LGBTQ Jewish community and our larger LGBTQ community for nearly 30 years now, from the depths of the AIDS crisis to the heights of marriage equality and beyond.
And this year, the death of a popular council member has created a new award, the Bill Rosendahl Courage Award, which went to its namesake, the late council member Bill Rosendahl, and LA's first openly gay council member.
I don't feel like he's gone. I still feel his warmth. I still feel his encouragement.
Future Bill Rosendahl Awards will be given to those who bravely speak their minds on LGBT and progressive values. But then it seems all of the honorees have done just that. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The final Stony Award went to Jane Wishen, known for her work on AIDS and LGBT issues. Well, enjoy a classic movie in a historic theater, take in a film fest that's gone to the dogs, and celebrate LA's rich cultural diversity during the Loomis Day Festival. All this and this week's things to do. This year marks the LA Conservancy's 30th season of classic films in historic theaters. To commemorate the occasion, the organization is going back to where it all began, Broadway's iconic movie palaces. With nine screenings and lots of interesting events to go with them, including special backstage tours, panel discussions, and post-show film trivia at Clifton's, it's the place to be for the classic film buff. This year's lineup includes vintage crowd pleasers like Tequila Mockingbird, Singin' in the Rain, and Some Like It Hot. Check it out at Orpheum Theater located at 842 South Broadway. For more, visit lacconservancy.org. The Dog Film Festival seeks to educate about adoption, pet wellness issues, and philosophical aspects of pets in our lives. The festival is a unique way of honoring dogs as true family members by bringing together like-minded people to experience global filmmakers' celebration of the human- canine bond. The event showcases films that inspire, educate, and entertain, and are appropriate for all members of the human family. Come pay tribute to our favorite furry friends on Sunday, June 5th, at The Crest located at 1262 Westwood Boulevard in Westwood. See more at dogfilmfestival.com. This weekend, you can enjoy some fun at the Loomis Day Festival. Loomis Day is named after Charles Fletcher Loomis, who was the first city editor of the Los Angeles Times and founded the Southwest Museum, or the first museum in Los Angeles. This festival celebrates the art, history, and ethnic diversity in Los Angeles and is a cultural event that is community-oriented. The event takes place June 3rd through the 5th at York Park at Avenue 50 and at the Southwest Museum, featuring art, crafts, vendors, food trucks, poetry, and musical performances. For more, visit loomisday.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I'm Christina Young.
And we are with the Los Angeles Public Library.
This year, the Los Angeles Public Library celebrates local talent, emerging artists, and legendary performers with a new cultural series, Made in LA.
The series will focus on the diversity of local talent and the variety of performance offerings that have evolved in Los Angeles throughout its eclectic history.
Made in LA will run from March 13th through June 30th and will feature 17 artists performing nearly 60 free performances at the downtown central library and branch libraries across the city of LA.
Our goal with the Made in LA series is to let you know that the library is more than books. We are also a space for cultural expression, to educate and inspire people through literature, art, music, and dance.
Made in LA will include performances by the comedians of Uncabaret, a series of short plays by Pacific Resident Theater, concerts by Klezmer Juice, an afternoon with punk legends Iksin Svirinka and John Doe of X, and a film screening Q&amp;A with the director of the critically acclaimed Tangerine.
For a schedule of performances and locations, please visit lapl.org/madeinla.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide. Open wide.
(music)
Sarge, just call up the university, let me know their ETAs. I do want to thank Mr. Bloomfield, Bonin, Englander, Harris, Dawson, and Coetz. And I want to apologize for my tardiness. Okay, good morning, good morning. It's Friday, June 3rd. Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. We're very happy to be at Van Nuys City Hall today. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, ten members, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, let's go first, order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Item 6 to June 8th, 2016, and to receive and file Item 12.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. You want to go through the agenda?
Yes, sir. Items 1 and 2 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, why don't we hold for a moment Item 2? And let's prepare to move forward on Item 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Mr. President, for the record...
Yes.
The ordinance for Item 1 will be held over one week to June 10th, 2016, unless reconsidered when 12 members are present.
Okay, we've been joined by Mr. Price and Mr. O'Farrell. They were in the room during the vote. But if you want to, let's do it again. Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Now we'll vote on, wait, are we having a sound difficulty with Luigi's mic? Okay, so now we will actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, now, continue.
Mr. President, Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. And sir, there are cards on 3, 4, 5, 8, and 9.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. And the items that you just mentioned, why don't we hold those and prepare to vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Item 11 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, continue.
That brings counsel to either items held special, or presentations, or public comment.
Okay, why don't we move to presentations? At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez.
Come on, I don't mind.
Hi.
Go inside, please. Hi. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, good.
Nice to see you. Of course, thank you. Come, stand right here. Good morning, colleagues. Today, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about an issue that's incredibly important, not only in my district, but I think to the city of Los Angeles. A few months ago, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention released the results of a new study. Half of black men and a quarter of Latino men who have sex with men are projected to be diagnosed with HIV during their lifetime. However, these numbers are only accurate if the current rate of infection stays the same. In my opinion, this is absolutely, there is absolutely no reason for this to be our future, not only here in the Valley, but in the city of Los Angeles. At no point in history have our society ever been better equipped to be able to treat and prevent HIV and AIDS. The new technologies, like the pre-exposure prophylaxis and the post-exposure prophylaxis, can help prevent the new infections from occurring both before and after a high-risk encounter occurs. Unfortunately, those who need these treatments most face significant barriers of healthcare. The lack of access to transportation, housing, cultural stigma can all discourage individuals from being treated for HIV and AIDS and STDs, and seek treatment, or seek treatment or prevention medication. This is why we rely on organizations like Northeast Valley Health Corporation to be the bridge between those at risk and the necessary prevention and treatment that they need to defer the current trends. Northeast Valley Health Corporation is near and dear to my heart because they gave me my first job when I was in high school. I was hired as a peer educator for the HIV and AIDS program way back when, in the early 1990s. And in my job, even though it's kind of funny sometimes to talk about it, I was a health peer educator, and my job was to hand out condoms. Not only to my peers at San Fernando High School, but I did an enormous amount of outreach on Van Nuys Boulevard and Pacoima around small little bars and cantinas back in the early 90s. We don't have that issue anymore on the Boulevard. But I would go talk to grown adults as a 17-year-old and pass out condoms and talk about how to prevent HIV and STDs. And I did it at a time where, in the 90s, Magic Johnson had just come out as being HIV-positive. Too Short had just passed away from AIDS. And it was a time where being diagnosed with HIV was a death sentence. And so I know a lot of people who passed away as a result of getting infected. And I did a lot of work around this issue. I think that the reason I'm not shy is because I got to talk about very controversial issues, such as sex and HIV and STD. I was very lucky, though, that my parents were incredibly encouraging. And coming from, growing up in a traditional Mexican Catholic family, I was very fortunate that my parents were very comfortable with me talking about these issues. My mom would often say, "Who better than Nori Martinez to talk about these issues to her peers?" And so at a time where, you know, we grew our outreach efforts, we also were able to save a lot of lives. And as a result of Northeast Valley and its work, I was able to do my share. And this is why this epidemic and the alarming growing numbers is so personal to me. I will always remember these days, and of course, I made a lot of friends in the process. One of them is Nick Roca, who's the Director of the HIV and AIDS Programs at Northeast Valley Health Corporation. And Nick is not only, I consider, a part of my family. He's been at every important, big occasion in my life. Nick has been there, not only as my mentor at Northeast Valley, he was there at my wedding and my daughter's baptism. And he's a great friend. Northeast Valley runs several clinics throughout the San Fernando Valley and the Santa Clarita area. The HIV clinic is located in my district here in CD6. And they serve not only HIV-positive individuals, but also homeless folks, people who suffer from substance abuse programs, problems, women and children as well. And the reason we brought Northeast Valley here today is not only to recognize their good work in leading our efforts to try to prevent HIV and AIDS from spreading, not only in the Valley but in Los Angeles. But National HIV Testing Day is June 27th. And in recognition of that day, Northeast Valley Health Corporation is partnering with our office to do, to offer HIV and AIDS testing at the Panorama Mall on June 27th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome, no questions asked. We will have bilingual, Spanish-speaking people there, manning our tables, and answering any questions that you might have, and guide you through the process of taking the test. It's very scary, a lot of people don't always have all the information ready for them. And it can be a very stressful time in someone's life when you're waiting for results. We will have the people there with the right information to get through that process. So I just wanted to bring everyone here from Northeast Valley Health Corporation, who makes up the HIV and AIDS Division, recognize them for their amazing work and in leading, one of the leading organizations in the Valley that talks about these issues in some of the most at-risk communities here in the Valley. It's sometimes a very uncomfortable issue to talk about, but we have to talk about it as a community and raise awareness about the growing epidemic, especially with the latest CDC numbers. The virus and the infection rates are increasing, and we can do something about making sure that we let people know where to get services and how to get tested, and then how to get treatment as a result. So, without further ado, I want to ask Nick Roca from Northeast Valley Health Corporation to say a few words. And also, I want to recognize that Jose Paredes is here, Juan Preciado, and Jackie Salcedo.
Give him a round of applause, thank you guys.
Matt, many, many years ago, these are friends of mine, people who have been incredible advocates to ensuring that our communities have access to care, but also information. So Nick, if you want to say a few words about HIV...
Welcome, sir.
Testing Day?
Thank you.
Just don't say anything about me growing up, when I was young, we're gonna keep it.
I have the pictures from when she was a kid. Actually, good morning, and I want to thank Councilwoman Nori Martinez for calling attention to this very important and meaningful event on November, June 27th. As you know, since 1995, all across the USA and the US territories, HIV testing occurs on that one day with a big campaign. We've had presidents go ahead and get tested in public to show their support of this effort. So we're doing it in Panorama City. We also offer HIV testing every day. There's a lot of new, exciting, and wonderful things going on. I've been involved with the HIV clinic here at Northeast Valley in Van Nuys since 1992. And at this point in time, we have come to a place where we're looking at an AIDS-free generation. So the goal is to implement testing, treatment, and what we call PrEP and PEP, the pre-exposure, the post-exposure, which if administered within a two-hour to 72-hour window can prevent the HIV virus from taking hold and infecting an individual. So it's never been more exciting since the medications in 1996 started to change and become highly sophisticated, to what is looming in the next year are injectable medications for HIV, which will also include the PrEP and PEP, where a person will come into the clinic once a month, and possibly once every 90 days, to get their medication injected, and we'll have them successfully treated. Treatment is prevention. A person who is successfully treated cannot transmit HIV. So that's the first hurdle we have. The other is the PrEP, with the intersection of treatment and prevention coming together. Lastly, I just want to include what Councilwoman was indicating, which is the infection rate, according to the CDC, continues to be over 50,000 new cases of HIV in the United States annually. That has not really dropped. So we really need to do a special outreach locally here in Van Nuys, as well as throughout L.A. City, to make sure that people who don't know their status become part of a routine annual HIV testing, something really everybody should be doing. And in addition to that, for high-risk individuals, that we de-stigmatize and tear down any kind of barriers that have them afraid of or fearing discrimination because they're coming in for an HIV test. So again, testing is, treatment is prevention. So again, testing is, treatment is prevention. Get tested, get treated, get viral suppression. And we're also looking at getting to zero, where we can get that 50,000 down to no new cases. It's doable, and I look forward to it happening. So thank you very much for this special opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Martinez, I have a speaker on the cue.
Sure. I just, if I can just end with this. I think all of us have either organizations that we work with in our respective districts, and we can let the word out in terms of HIV Testing Day on June 27th and do our part in connecting our constituents to these services. It's very important. The numbers are on the rise, and there's really no excuse for anyone to not be able to have access to these treatments and take care of themselves and, as a result, save lives. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and if we have someone.
Mr. Kukoryan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Ms. Martinez, both for this presentation and for your long commitment on this issue. I had no idea about this first job of yours.
I'm not going to tell you who was condom man in 1990.
Yeah.
I happen to have married him.
Oh. Well, we definitely want to see that picture. We want to see that picture that you have of her, especially if it includes condom man. It's really important that you brought this. We live in an era now where AIDS is a disease that can be addressed and can be managed, and while not yet cured, can be managed in a way that it was impossible to do 20 years ago, when a positive test, an HIV-positive test, was really something akin to a death sentence, as you described. And yet, one out of eight HIV-positive Americans do not know their status right now, which means that they are in a position to continue to spread the infection rate simply because they don't know their status. So even before treatment comes testing. And the most critical element in this is that every American needs to be tested, and there's really no excuse anymore. Eight years ago, I was very proud that Governor Schwarzenegger signed legislation that I wrote to make sure that HIV testing would be reimbursed by California insurers in every healthcare setting. It would be a mandatory reimbursement. In order to try to relieve some of those barriers, California became the first state in the nation to do so. And there really is no reason that people, whether it's in a clinic setting or in a hospital setting, it just must be a routine part of ordinary healthcare, just the same as being tested for anything else that we get tested for in healthcare settings. So thank you for bringing this level of awareness. I think all of us should join you in our own districts in raising the awareness of this day so that it becomes an annual reminder to everyone. Just like we check our cholesterol, just like we check our blood pressure, let's check our HIV status as well.
Absolutely. Well said. Thank you, Mr. Kukoryan.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Martinez, to close.
That's it. And so in recognition of National HIV Testing Day, I want to recognize Northeast Valley Health Corporation for being a trailblazer here in the San Fernando Valley, and wish them continued success and thank them for their partnership with the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you.
Today I have the distinct honor and privilege to have with me Dr. Heather Penrod. Also joining us, we have the principal and the assistant principal at Reseda High School, Jose Rodriguez and Melanie Walsh. We're here to honor Dr. Penrod. In an age where the lack of arts and education is plaguing public schools across the nation, teachers like Heather Penrod are more necessary than ever. Over the past year, Heather spearheaded and coordinated the New Arts, Media, Entertainment Magnet Program at Reseda High School. This program gives students the freedom and tools to explore their artistic imagination and develop original content. Students have access to state-of-the-art facilities, including a soundstage, animation studio, and rehearsal space for dance and for music. They've teamed up with a number of critical, important organizations like the LA Times, Cal State Northridge, the Center Stage Opera, offering students direct access to professional industries. And at the helm, Dr. Penrod fosters an environment where students learn to think outside of the box to solve problems. Her students use critical and creative thinking, as well as logical reasoning and analysis, to come to their own conclusions. In short, it's not just about art education. She is teaching folks how to think. As a lifelong educator herself, Heather Penrod started teaching at Reseda High School in the late 1990s, so just a year or two ago. She graduated from Cal State Fullerton. She received her master's from Pepperdine University and Cal State Northridge, earned her doctorate in education from Cal Lutheran. And throughout the years, Dr. Penrod has taught a variety of subjects: English, world history, government, psychology, American literature. How do you teach so many subjects? It's amazing. Various other subjects in the social sciences. And Dr. Penrod has also racked up numerous honors and awards in her professional career. I can't go through all of them because we'd be here all morning, but I'll mention a few. Just recently, the Encino Chamber of Commerce 2016 Teacher of the Year Award, the Charles Red Center K-12 Teaching Western History Award, the Urban Education Partnership Humanities Teacher Team Award, that one's a mouthful, but it's an important award, the Strive for Excellence in Educational Leadership doctoral fellowship, the list goes on and on. I'm standing next to a very accomplished person. And Dr. Penrod has also written a series of publications at Cal Lutheran, Cal State Northridge, Cal State Polytechnic University, and a peer review from LAUSD. All of this she's been doing while serving in a leadership position at Reseda, and she's been helping bring in critical money to Reseda High. And in so doing, has helped develop innovative curriculums and partnerships and holding an adjunct professorship at USC. For all of these many reasons, and the fact that she has touched the lives of so many members of my district, of our city, students growing up right in Reseda, we're here to give her an award and honor her today. So I'd like to present to you, Dr. Penrod, recognition, not just for me, your council member, but something signed by all of the members of the city council.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It is such an honor to be here, and it's such an honor to receive this award. I feel that this award is a celebration of a community, because it takes a village, it takes a community to support the education and well-being of all our students. And I'm here to also thank everyone who's made this possible. And my administration, Mr. Rodriguez and Melanie Walsh. Two years ago, a lead teacher and I, Diane Wilson and I, approached Mr. Rodriguez with this idea of a school within a school. And fast forward to today, we now have this media arts and entertainment magnet opening next year. There have been so many people who have helped on this journey of creating this environment to support students. For example, this year, when I called Bob Bloomingfield's office to ask for a bus, his office generously paid for a bus for students to go to Pepperdine University, to meet Director Olmos, have a personal Q&amp;A session with this director on his work. And it's events like these with community, such as Leon Woods, head of the Education Committee for the Encino Chamber of Commerce, and the leaders, esteemed leaders of the Encino Chamber of Commerce with me today, supporting schools, bringing schools together, collaborating with members of the community. Again, this is a community effort. This is a village. It takes a village to raise a child. Thank you very, very much for allowing me to be here and honor me. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll go over there so you can continue the meeting.
Yeah. Ironically, it was AIDS-related. They were great dealing with that level.
I've worked with them for 20 years.
Hey, let's, we're gonna, before we go into our next presentation, I want to take up item three, Mr. Walsh. Item three, Mr. Walsh, please come forward, John Walsh. Item three, and you can stay there. I think I may do three and four.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and/or Jay Walsh Confidential. As far as item three is concerned, this again is rent escrow account program. I've dealt with this. I just want you to know that if they don't keep your apartment up to code and you complain, the landlord will get a letter. They never tell you this. And it'll say, "From now on, you pay the rent to us. Your tenant pays the rent to us." When my landlord got the letter, everything got fixed in 24 hours. So believe me, this works. And again, when you do an excellent job, I am the first person to congratulate all of you. You do an excellent job on the rent escrow program. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, don't move, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
If we could move on to item four, Mr. Walsh, that was called special by you as well. Item four.
This is a new, it's a lease agreement for the new Sherman Oaks Field Office for Council District Four. We don't need any new field offices. We need money spent on the sidewalk. And incidentally, anybody who's watching this who's brown or yellow or maybe black, I want you to know the field offices go to neighborhoods which are 90% to 95% this color skin. And remember, remember the old saying, "If you're white, that's all right."
Stay on the subject.
You can stay around, and if you're black, stay back. The new Sherman Oaks Field Office, I don't know, how much is this going to cost us? Notice they don't tell us how much it's going to cost us. I understand $1.1 million, because their skin is the same color as my skin, not Bradley's skin. It was a different world. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, now let's tabulate the vote. Let's go to item five, Mr. Wa, I mean, Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman and Mr. Walsh on item five. Ms. Peirman, come forward.
This is for the Harbor Area Gang Alternative Program for Graffiti Abatement, Litter and Trash Pickup. Okay, that's an awful lot of money for $40,000. It seems like it can come up with an area for services to be done at a cheaper rate. So I'm not for this item. I just want to visually speak on another item, but they took away number six. Anyway, so, yeah, so that's all I'm going to say. I'm sorry, I'm not for this item. Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at, this is minute three. Third time I'm up, one minute each. Jay Walsh Confidential, you can go here, read whatever you, read all about it. This concerns graffiti abatement. Well, I see no abatement of the graffiti. I see more and more graffiti. A person was killed at UCLA, they found graffiti all over him. If you stay, if you don't move in the valley for more than 30 seconds, someone sprays you with graffiti. It's out of control. This is gang alternatives. This is to give gang members some pocket money. This for graffiti abatement, litter, and trash pickup and tree trimming. Are you doing a good job or are you doing a bad job? How much money is it? We don't know. You're just putting on a blindfold and handing out money, and there's nothing more crooked, to borrow a phrase, than gang alternative program.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Ms. Martinez, are you ready for your next presentation? Then the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Don't be afraid of getting closer. Okay. Good morning again, colleagues. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce five extraordinary women from the San Fernando Valley who were recently honored by the United Chambers of Commerce for being an inspiration to women across the city of Los Angeles. With us today, we have Carolyn Blaschek. Is she here? She's not here. Susan Dubrin, Virginia Hadfield, Veronica Padilla, and Deanna Thomas. These women have individually impacted the lives of others here in the San Fernando Valley. And I just want to say a couple of words about each one. Carolyn Blaschek is a founder of Operation Gratitude, the California-based nonprofit volunteer organization that annually sends over 200,000 care packages that include snacks, entertainment items, and personal letters of appreciation addressed to individual US service members deployed in harm's way. Let's give Carolyn a big round of applause. I can attest to her work. Operation Gratitude is now located in Chatsworth in Mitch Englander's district, and they do an amazing job, all volunteer-run. And she couldn't be here with us this morning, but it's an amazing organization. Our next honoree is Susan Dubrin. She dedicates much of her time and energy in creating and participating in support for special needs communities. She helps parents and children with special needs bridge access to local medical resources and professionals who provide medical care and screenings. They continue to offer these services at their back-to-school events in some of our schools. So let's give Susan a big round of applause. Virginia Hadfield, better known as Jeannie, spent 30 years of her professional career working the San Fernando Valley field offices of various federal, state, and local elected officials. Jeannie has volunteered with many San Fernando Valley nonprofits. In 2004, Jeannie was elected to the Board of Neighborhood Councils in Valley Village, and she's been elected seven times. She has served all 13 years as vice president of the board and has worked diligently to build one of the few, one of the few of the city's 96 elected boards with the majority of women holding board and committee positions. Let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you, Virginia. My good friend. My good friend Veronica Padilla is an inspirational woman from the northeast San Fernando Valley. She currently serves as the Executive Director of Pacoima Beautiful, an environmental justice nonprofit organization that works very hard to develop a community of leaders, engage youth and adults in activities, that gives them the tools to advocate for a better environment in the northeast San Fernando Valley. She's currently also serving on the City Planning Commission here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for your service, Veronica. And our final honoree is Diana Thomash, who founded the Young Ambassadors Leadership Academy, also known as Yala, with the help of her husband. The program entails a series of life lessons that they want to teach, that they wanted to teach their older son, Garrett, and that's how the program came about. Yala is a program that affirms the significance and confirms the potential of young black boys, and helps them understand that, how to reach their potential and their greatness, how to partner and be responsible, foster, and fosters leadership and excellence in everything that they do. Congratulations to you. And as you can see, all of these women have touched and changed lives throughout their many years of service to the communities here in the San Fernando Valley. I want to thank you for your contribution, and for helping Los Angeles be a better city, and especially parts of our San Fernando Valley. Thank you very much for your dedication and your service to our community. I don't know if Les wants to say a few words on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce? Would you like to say something?
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Les Himes, I am the Chair of the United Chambers of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley, organization of 19 chambers of commerce representing about 21,000 employers and about 350,000 jobs. We're the voice of small business for the San Fernando Valley. We thank you for recognizing us, and for these wonderful ladies that we have recognized. We're a volunteer organization made up of people like this, who spend their time to try to make the San Fernando Valley a better place, and we thank you for recognizing our event.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, colleagues, and let's give our women, our inspirational women of the San Fernando Valley, another big round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're gonna vote on reconsideration on item 12. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, there were some cards on that, so if I could get Donna Pierman, please come forward on item 12. Donna Pierman.
Yeah.
Mr. Walsh and Mr. Gus on item 12.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, this is one of these. Start off with this, okay, quiddy. Bond for, do not exceed $16 million for equipment of two affordable multifamily housing rental facilities, which of course, as I said, it looks like an affordable prison apartment. There's no aesthetics to these apartments when they build those things, nothing to make it look nice for the area. It's huge, and it's ugly, and most of it is not even used for affordable housing in places like that, because most of it's filled up with usual prices, high-priced apartments, when they usually, because that's how they accept these things, and then usually, like, 5% of the people over there is actually on low income. So, I'm totally against this here, and I'm gonna keep this down to one minute. Thank you, don't approve it, but I know you will.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is going to go through. The major problem with this is who gets the $16 million? Who gets the bond deal? Who gets to make print money? And that's your friends in the banking community. And $16 million is much too much for this per unit. It's much too much. Private enterprise can build at 2/3 of what you can build, the rate, your rate. $16 million, there'll be no probing questions, there'll be no question about who gets the bond deal. That all happens in the back room. And it used to be, it was bad under Bradley, and it was bad under Mayor Sam when I first came here. But now, under Garcetti, it's like the mob. Everything is done like the mob here, under Garcetti. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Gus.
Good morning, councilmembers. As some of you know, I have a master's degree in business with a focus in econometrics. And this goes back, this goes back to the Reagan era. All of a sudden, on today's agenda, we have multiple items, including this one that's talking about Tefra. All of a sudden, city council is dealing with Tefra issues, and you're looking to waive economic issues related to Tefra going back to Reagan, all of a sudden? Okay, so what I'm confused is that you're going to have a Tefra hearing next Wednesday in the morning before city council, and then, at city council, you're going to give away this, this basically, ability to print money. The last part of this item says, direct the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department to execute and enforce the terms of the regulatory agreement. So, when are they gonna do that? In the time between the Tefra hearing in the morning and the city council meeting in the late morning? When are those provisions gonna be ironed out? In the elevator ride from the committee meeting down to the city council meeting? This is fait accompli. I guess the question is, why are you going through this charade? You're giving away all sorts of access to the, to land developers, and I have no idea how, in the course of a morning meeting, before city council, you're actually going to execute and enforce the terms. Can somebody please address that? When is that gonna be done? In the elevator ride from the committee to the council meeting? This is a charade, it's predetermined, and does anybody even know the origins of Tefra? It actually has to do with healthcare. So, why, all of a sudden, are you guys now, see, Krikorian is actually smiling, because he knows this is a fraud.
Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Let's move to item eight. Ms. Pierman, item eight. Mr. Gus, Mr. Walsh, item eight. Item eight.
That can't keep the observatory open on Mondays, even on holidays, while they spend 17 millions on pretend affordable prison housings. How much is earmarked for low income? As I said, it's usually a huge, big prison, it's probably another huge prison-looking building, with nobody on the outside, over there on Temple Street. And a lot of the apartments side is regular high price, while the small percentage is affordable housing. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and O'Farrell, caring, for paying projects that we don't care about. What we want is something for the area, like, what we want is have money for streets, paving. What we want to have money is to clean up and be able, oh, yeah, keep these people out of those, these homeless are going over and over, and they're inundating us with these places, even in our areas. Let's, we need to get rid of that, not have these affordable housing. Thank you.
Mr. Gus, followed by Mr. Walsh.
All right, one minute only, please, one minute only. I guess the big problem with the failure of affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles is that you never define what affordable is. Is it affordable across the board? Or is it affordable just for CD 13, as opposed to the next agenda item, which is affordable for CD 9? So are you, are you deciding what's affordable by district? Or are you deciding what's affordable across the whole city? And this is a very, very poorly-written agenda item, because it says mixed-use affordable housing. The next agenda item says affordable rental housing. So is it just sloppy writing, Mr. O'Farrell? Can you please let the public know? Did you mean to put the word rental in this? Because otherwise, what's the difference between this item and the next item? I think you should take it off, or have Mr. O'Farrell tell us right now, is it rental, or is it not? One minute.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, you've got a close-up here in the Van Nuys. Number one, go to Jay Walsh Confidential, and then you can see the tweets. Affordable housing, actually, you do a halfway kind of decent job on affordable housing. You don't have the money to build, and you don't want to crack down and make the, these big developers who will, "Oh, we have affordable housing in our development." Yeah, three units. How much is affordable housing? $900 a month. $10,000, that's affordable housing? I wish some of you, one of you up here would tell the people in this city the definition of affordable. Give it to me, give it to us in dollars and cents. They have only contempt for you up here, all 15 of them, they will not tell you what affordable, their definition of affordable. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
We'll move now to item nine, Ms. Pierman. Mr. Gus.
Okay, millions before, and now 24 million here, and we can't have video conferencing from Van Nuys, that's horrible. Bring back video conferencing. It won't prevent homeless from having tents coming in the middle-class area, these areas, these homeless or people are not gonna be going to these, oh, yeah, and this is single-room occupancy, which makes it worse, because these are talking about having, I believe, this is the one, where they want to have, they go over to hotels, having these buildings where they have people coming, having their own hotels, and coming over there, and having people coming over there and stealing it from the regular hotels, so that the workers can't have, that they'll lose their jobs, because these regular ones will take business away from the regular hotels. So, anyway, I'm not for this item. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gus.
One minute only, please, one minute only. As opposed to item number eight today, this item says affordable rental housing. So I guess the question is, why are O'Farrell's people getting helpful housing that's not rental, and Weesar's are only getting rental housing? And the question is, again, if you're waiving 35-year-old Tefra guidelines, where does this go, guys? How can this be? Are you calling affordable one thing in Weesar's district, and calling affordable something else in O'Farrell's district? All of a sudden, city councils waiving Tefra guidelines? You've never heard the word "Tefra" used in these issues until this month. So I guess what happened, now that it's June, that city council is suddenly looking to waive Tefra guidelines, which go back to the Reagan area, era. One minute only, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Mr. Weesar.
Please.
Forthwith on number nine. Okay, we're gonna, Mr. Krikorian, help me out here a bit. It's my understanding that ultimately, we are going to continue item two, but we do have some folk that are here. I think we can give them a minute, a minute each.
Mr. President, we'd like the matter to be continued to July 26th, if possible, but since there are members who would like to speak, if you'd allow them that opportunity, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so Tyler Agar, Walker Foley, Jason Ackerman, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Tyler Agar, and I'm with Food and Water Watch, and I'm speaking in favor of this motion today. It's an excellent step forward for the city of Los Angeles. However, I do have concerns that there, this motion is not time-bound. I think that we need to set forth a timeline for the completion of the study, and also a timeline for an actual commitment for Los Angeles to make the transition to 100% renewable energy. Climate science tells us we have 10 to 15 years at the most to complete this transition. We're here today in the San Fernando Valley, where thousands of people's lives were disrupted by the Porter Ranch gas blowout. That can't happen again. We can't let this keep happening. It is time for a change. We have the facts, we have the technology. Let's join San Francisco and San Diego in becoming leaders on clean energy. Thank you.
Okay, so if I can get Mr. Foley, Jason, I thought I, Jason, and then Kent, I thought maybe I saw him leave. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to request that Valley resident Carol Hart speak ahead of me, she has to run out and feed her meter. I hate for her to get a ticket.
Now, you know what, that, I, if I can find her card, Valerie, what?
Carol Hart.
Carol, I got you. So let's do that. We don't want you, we want you to feed the meter, not the other way around.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. I'll speak later on on regular public comment, but on this particular issue, I am a member of the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance. I'm also taking the great training, that I want to thank you all for, from the Cool Blocks leader, David Gershon. So I'll be a Cool Blocks leader and trainer in my community, and I'd like to take that to neighborhoods everywhere. Sustainable energy, 100% renewable, solar is safer, wind we can live with and we can breathe with. Please vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, come on, Walker, and then Jason.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. So my name's Walker Foley, I'm an organizer with Food and Water Watch, and I'd also like to urge the council's support of item number two, but I would like to echo Carol and Tyler's comments, that we need more urgency on this. It is one thing to study renewable energy, it's another thing to set a time limit for it. Global leaders in December set an agenda for reducing climate emissions by one, or keeping global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. But in order to do that, we would need to shut down the entire industry and stop burning fossil fuels in four years. And because we don't track methane, fugitive methane emissions like the SoCal gas blowout, we may have already surpassed that, which puts us on a track to 3.5 to 10-degree warming, which means global crop failures, freshwater scarcity, refugee crises, resource wars. So, I think this is a really great step for the city. It's a visionary step. We are a global city, and it means a great deal around the world, but we need to get timely with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, followed by Kent, followed by Mark Morris. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too, Herb. So, Jason Ackerman, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council Vice President, past chair of Sustainability Committee, member of Sustainability Alliance, I could go on forever, not hearing any of his official capacities right now. So, what's been said, we need urgency on this, on this renewable energy plan. One thing, one way we can get some urgency on that is to have DWP hire some more solar inspectors. Right now, there's a huge backlog, because we don't have enough solar installation inspectors going out and making the rounds, and checking that all the solar that is being installed right now is being done properly, and is causing huge backlogs for homeowners and businesses. So that's one way we could expedite that process. Another thing is, I'm all for us getting our energy sector off of fossil fuels, we also need to get our transportation system off of fossil fuels and onto electric ASAP. Antelope Valley Transit is going 100% electric by 2018, we should look at the same for LEDOT.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker? And you'll be followed by Mark Loraine Lundquist, Alexandra Nagy, go right ahead.
Great, yeah, Councilmember West and all the other councilmembers, Councilmember Englander, thank you for letting us come here and speak, even though this had been heard in committee and public comment in committee. This is a very important subject for us here in the San Fernando Valley, and because you meet in the valley every other month, which is very much appreciated, thank you for letting us come up and express our support for this study, and also our ask that it be conducted in a way where there is a deadline. I could have my son, I could ask him to clean up his room, he could probably do a study on cleaning up his room, but if he doesn't set a date, I don't think it's gonna happen. So, so if you could, that's our only ask, is that if, along with this, if there could be a date set, that when this report should be coming out. Thank you, again, thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you, sir. So if I could get Loraine Lundquist, Alexandra Nagy, it looks like Retta, maybe, Alexander? So if I could get Lorraine Lundquist, Alexandra Nagy, it looks like Retta, maybe, Alexander? Elena Semper. Yes.
Thank you, uh, my name is Lorraine Lundquist, I'm a resident of the valley. I support this motion because it's what we have on the table, but I also like the others. I urge you to go further than just the mere research that's called for in this text. We really don't have the luxury of time to sit around and wait for yet another study, especially while our sister cities like San Diego, San Francisco, San Jose, and so many other cities that have already committed to going to one-hundred percent renewables race ahead to the clean energy economy, particularly at a time when the SoCal gas blowout has reminded us all of the devastating effect that gas-generated electricity has on our communities. It's time to act. I urge you to lead as President Kennedy did when he announced we were going to the moon. He didn't set up a research task force for that. He said, "Let's get it done. We don't have to study how to do it, we're going to do it now." I urge you to, um, consider that kind of vision and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker?
Good morning, everyone. Alexandra Nagy, Food and Water Watch. I'm here to support this motion but would also ask that we have a deadline on it. When do we get this study out? I would hope that it would be timely with the LEDWP IRP that's going through public review this year. We know LEDWP is looking at one-hundred percent. We really need the city to make a commitment to one-hundred percent. We know that the SoCal gas blowout has devastated the lives of many in the San Fernando Valley and anything less than a commitment to one-hundred percent renewables is really selling out these communities that have gone through so much. Um, and getting off of fossil fuels will make sure that our city moves forward together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I can get, uh, Ms. Alexandra and Elena Semper? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Retta Alexander. I reside in Van Nuys. I'm speaking in support of the motion to move the city of Los Angeles to one-hundred percent renewable energy. I urge, however, setting a date to accomplish this task and, of course, the sooner the better. The SoCal gas blowout at Eliso Canyon was just another unfriendly reminder of our need to move to renewable, to shut, to shut the Eliso Canyon facility down and to move to renewable wind and solar energy now. Thank you.
Thank you. So no Ms. Semper? Semper, oh, there you are, come on.
I'm here to strongly support one-hundred percent renewable energy and the motion for Department of Water and Power to analyze as well as expedite implementation. I've spent a great deal of time educating myself on energy needs and know we can effectively shift from fossil to renewable energy. I attended the United Nations Conference of the Parties in Paris this past December and witnessed public energy presentations from around the world. Los Angeles' ability to convert from dirty energy to clean renewable was further confirmed after educating at the CEC PUC ISO Joint Energy Workshop. On April eighth, Senator Fran Pavly's presentation to do so is a tangible solution that includes clean energy jobs. The less money we invest in fossil fuel damage control, the more we can progress to cleaner, safer, reliable energy systems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes, uh, comment from the public on that item. Uh, Madam Clerk, this will be, uh, heard again on what day?
July twenty-sixth.
Okay, so let us at this time recess the regular meeting and go into the special.
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Weston, twelve members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts, I have two cards on this. Do you want to begin or do you want me to take the cards or how do you want to? Okay, so if I can get Mr. Gus and Mr. Walsh. This is, uh, item thirteen of this special meeting.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDims. This again is, uh, a reward. You know, you're going to think I'm joking when I say this, right? You're going to think John Walsh thinks you're so stupid out there watching, that you're going to think this is true? This is the apprehension and conviction for the people responsible for killing a dog. Now, there are thousands of blacks and Hispanics who've been murdered and you don't give a fucking shit about their asses, their black and brown and yellow asses. But this was a white person whose dog was killed and the police have been told this is the number-one issue. And you guess how much? I like this. Fifty thousand dollars for a black person, ten thousand dollar reward for a dog. So I just want you to know, Mr. Price, in this city, your life is worth five times what a dog is and my life is worth millions of dollars because of my skin and you vote for this dog. And you, I, I ask all of you to get up there and go out to the neighborhood and ask everyone on the street in South LA and East LA whether you think that somebody is, somebody should turn in somebody for ten thousand dollars. And the scumbags, see, uh, Zahnheiser, The Times isn't going to cut-
Stay on the subject.
I can't, no, you're going to have to look this up because I think people are saying, "John Walsh, do you think I'm not stupid to believe that this city is offering ten thousand dollar reward for a dog?" Go and look at it on page three, agenda, special, in a special council meeting for the dog. This isn't the only bitch here today. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Gus.
Councilmembers, while I'm glad to see this type of reward for the killing of any dog, I think it's awfully hypocritical that you're offering ten thousand dollars for the killing of a dog. You tell the public that you're not killing dogs, but you guys kill dogs all the time. What is the difference between this killing of this dog and you're lying to the public about killing thousands of other dogs? What is the difference here? What is the difference here? Now, where's the reward for the dogfighting where people deliberately fight dogs, particularly in South LA and East LA? Where's the ten thousand dollar reward for that? Animals are used, roosters are used in these blood sports and animals die. You could see the bloodstains of Mr. Harris Dawson's district, of Mr. Price's district, of Ms. Martinez's and Mr. Weezar's district every Sunday morning after the fights. Where is the reward for that? Why are you offering an award this time? I guess the question is, what is different about this killing than all of the other killing? The dogfights? The cockfights? Where is the reward for those crimes? All of a sudden, you're offering ten thousand dollars for this particular killing? I mean, you told the public recently that you're not killing animals anymore. That's not true. So what is, what is different about this? Let the public hear what Mr. Corretts has to say about that because he is running for election and he is making fundraising calls. Tell him he's doing this stuff all the time.
Stay on the subject.
Oh, I am, I am. I guess the question is, what's different about this killing of a dog than all of the other killings of other dogs around the city that you will award nothing for? Is it because those killings are in black and Latino districts or what's different about this? Very curious. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have the city offer a reward in the amount of ten thousand dollars leading to the identification of the person who killed the dog in the sixteen-hundred block of East First Street on May fourteenth of this year. This was a particularly heinous crime because this is a small Yorkie that jumped out of the car window of his owner and I believe the owner is a person with a dangerous anger management problem. He ran after his dog. When he reached the dog, he punched it and then slammed it into the sidewalk until it died. Um, so it is the, the, not only the animal cruelty but the potential danger to human beings. There's nothing to say that this person couldn't get angry and do the same thing to a frail senior citizen on the street. Um, and I saw a situation similar to this about thirty years ago where, uh, a mentally ill homeless man actually kicked a small dog to death and the fact that a couple of us appeared and chased him off may have prevented him from then killing the owner as well. We believe this is also a vehicle that may not be that hard to identify because, uh, its, its doors were painted a slightly different color, its bumper was painted a slightly different color and so we believe that, uh, multiple people have seen it and may have that car, uh, that, that van sitting right next door to them. Um, a similar situation that we had with a hit-and-run driver who was caught the day after we offered a reward because their next-door neighbor spotted the vehicle. Um, we believe this can happen with this one. And in addition to the ten thousand dollars that, uh, the city has offered, we have now gotten an additional matching, uh, amount of, of twelve thousand five hundred from animal welfare organizations and I'd like to announce that, uh, my office will be responsible for an additional twenty-five hundred. So at this point, we're offering twenty-five thousand dollars in total, um, if, for someone that can help, uh, bring this person to justice. So I ask colleagues, uh, for an i-vote on this ten thousand dollar award.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, can we adjourn the special return to the regular? And if that's the case, what, uh, is before this body? Mr. Weezar?
Regular, if we could ask for forthwith on number eleven, please.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
Uh, Mr. President, council has, uh, pub, general public comment left.
Then that's where we will go. We'll call on, uh, Mr. Mark Morris. Is it Yelena? Zeltzer, possibly? Donna Pierman, come forward. Please, come on.
Good morning, council members. My name is Yelena Zeltzer and I'm a longtime resident of a rent-stabilized apartment in Korea Town in CD-ten. I'm also, um, an affordable housing advocate and a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. With me, behind me, are hotel workers and food service workers from across the city of Los Angeles. We are here today to tell you guys that we have collected over twenty-three hundred cards in support of the short-term rental policy that the LA City Council will review in the coming months. The cards state that, "I am a proud hospitality worker. Airbnb insured-term rentals are destroying our communities. We strongly support the policy because it protects our good jobs and housing. We believe that this policy strikes a great balance for hosts, renters, and our communities. It creates fairness and transparency so that the entire buildings do not turn into illegal hotels and rent-stabilized units are protected." We're proud to stand with one of the most diverse coalitions in this city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down here. Thank you. So I don't see Mr. Morris, Ms. Pierman? Someone, I have the, James?
Bring back video conferencing to Van Nuys. And California Publicis is the last chance this Tuesday to fix America. Vote for Donald J. Trump for president. I'm sorry for Democrats' closed ballot in July, in June. We must vote for Donald J. Trump. We don't need four-eight years to continue Obama policies for voting for Hillary Clinton or voting for high taxes for middle-class under Bernie. Obamacare is a big fiasco. The charging poor people of low wages or SSI or disability and seniors for, seniors for services that were once for free. I know my boyfriend being charged for those services. Ambulances have to charge now. Meantime, people from Syria are giving everything for free. Not for Americans, blacks, whites, Hispanics, not for them. Donald Trump will change that. Obama's, uh, friendly with Iran, North Korea, Cuba. He, uh, Hillary not friends for veterans. Obama rather apologized Japan for what had to be done and we're welcome to continuation. So Donald Trump for president. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get James, uh, and, uh, that's all I have, James, and I have, uh, Mr. Gus, followed by Chuck Tenen. Yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes. Um, um, we have a, a problem with, uh, unlawful vending in our residential area and Foothill Division doesn't seem to be able to, uh, handle the problem with, uh, the ACE program for some reason. Um, they find every excuse why they can enforce it. Uh, it's causing a public nuisance in our, in our area and that is, uh, around Mary McAuley Church in District Seven. Um, and also, um, they say something about that, uh, they can't do anything about it because of religious items that they're selling, which are candles with religious stickers and flowers and I don't understand that. Um, uh, I wish somebody could clarify that for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get Mr. Gus and then we'll get, uh, Chuck Tenen after Mr. Gus, followed by, uh, Lorraine Lundquist. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'm going to be the lead plaintiff in a suit against the city of Los Angeles very soon because you're hiding documents, council members. When the mayor's office wrote, Mayor Garcetti's, uh, chief counsel wrote, "The public interest will be best served by withholding documents rather than disclosing documents." So when we do get the internal records of things that you've hidden, it's going to be exposed big time. For example, a report that Mr. Weston gave to Mr. Corretts somehow disappeared from Mr. Corretts' file. Mr. Corretts writes me this morning that we sent you everything we could find, you're just wasting our time. So when I asked Mr. Weston about that at coffee this morning, he said, "Well, maybe Mr. Corretts threw it out." Uh, I think if Mr. Corretts is throwing out documents, he shouldn't be chairing the pause committee. Just wait till I sue you. Just wait till I get my hands on your internal communications about what's going on. You want to protect the mayor? He's not going to become HUD Secretary.
Thank you, uh, Chuck Tenen, followed by Lorraine Lundquist and then Jason. Jason, you, yeah, Jason, you're still here, okay. Yes, Chuck, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning to my friend, the Honorable Herb Weston Jr., who undoubtedly will be our next mayor of this great city.
Oh, come on, Chuck.
Does an outstanding job as the city council president. At council meetings, to all the agitators who mock, belittle, disrupt, degrade, or are prejudiced to him, shame on you. Herb has helped many people in the city, including myself. He supports kids and programs that are the future of the city. Let Herb do his job, leave him alone and stop picking on him. On another note, this is the only city in the United States of America that the residents of this city have to pay to watch city council meetings on public access cable channel for thirty-five that was once our city channel. Herb, may God bless you always in everything you do. Keep up the good work. Your friend Chuck Tenen, your friends at Marina Del Rey Sport Fishing and Big Fish Music. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, for being so kind. Thank you. So do we have Ms. Lundquist? Jason, if I can have, uh, you come forward. Uh, what about Walker Foley? Jason, just come on, you're close.
I'm close, I can't teleport.
Go ahead.
All right.
You ought to be able to.
So Jason, so Jason Ackerman, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council Vice President. Um, on behalf of the Neighborhood Council, I would like to say, uh, welcome back to Van Nuys. Um, I'd also like to, on behalf of the council, say, uh, we have set aside a significant chunk of money to bring back video conferencing to Van Nuys. So we would really like a motion from one of our esteemed council members representing or representing the San Fernando Valley to bring this forth so we can get some community impact statements, so we can get the community re-engaged. This is a very different time than when, um, uh, the funding was cut. We have a lot of hot-button issues right now. Sustainability being a chief one and driving to, um, LA City Hall is not sustainable in any definition of the word. Um, I understand there have been some issues with some personalities, but we need to set those aside and move forward with the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Thank you. So did Mr. Foley leave? So if I could get, yeah, you were, I was going to call you. You just could read my mind, Ms. Hart. Please come forward.
I was just going to let you know that, yes, Lorraine Lundquist and Mr. Foley had to leave.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to thank you in my public comment on behalf of all of the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance and all of us folks on the Cool Blocks Training Team for, um, supporting-
Sustainability Alliance and all of us folks on the Cool Blocks Training Team for supporting us with the funding that was unanimously approved last time I was at City Hall downtown. And I just really want to express my gratitude for that. As a result of that funding, we will be able to get the books that are needed and give them to our constituents free of charge so that they can follow along with the Cool Blocks program, and we can start building a cadre, a well-trained, well-informed people who will be prepared for emergencies that are either man-made or natural in nature. So thank you so much, folks.
No, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Semper, please come forward. Elena? You okay? Then Mr. Walsh? John Walsh?
Herb Wesson gave false information that not only were two killed, but seven were injured. That's what he said right up there. Here's what happened. The cops showed up, they saw a brown man, he had two expensive guns, he was dead, and they, they didn't know at that time that he was Indian. They immediately assumed it was the first strike of a gigantic terrorist attack on UCLA. How else can you explain the fact that they sent out 500 cops, 40, 17 ambulances? And you can see on, on TV, the cops feeling up really cute, attractive girl teenage students. It was a disaster. It was, and the rest of the intelligence community realized that LA jumped a gun, and everybody is laughing at us.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
I just wanted to make a special recognition of someone in the audience.
I think you should go right ahead.
Constituent of mine who has been, who has lived in the valley since 1963, but of a special importance, it is the mother of someone who sits around this horseshoe. And I'm talking about our own Dion.
Good to see you.
His mother, Delia O'Connell. She's here with Dion's brother, Michael. Both valley residents, we're really glad that you're here. Your son does a great job up here. Keeps us legal, keeps us going, and we're really grateful to you for lending him to us for all these council sessions. Thank you.
Now, I won't say he keeps us legal, but he does keep us going, okay? That you can be assured of. So that concludes general public comment, and it is good to see you again. I remember I met you a few years back, right here at Van Nuys City Hall. So, Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
Any announcements? Could all in the chambers please rise? I'm going to look to Mr. Corretts, adjourning motions. All please rise in the council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, colleagues, on Wednesday, we lost a UCLA professor, William Clug, to gun violence, another senseless and despicable taking of light by someone armed to do exactly that in a society where such horrific occurrences continue unabated. On Wednesday, as our colleague Paul Krikorian led a presentation on gun violence and noted that 30,000 to 40,000 American lives are lost to gun violence each and every year, we were told that shooting had taken place at UCLA, and there was an active shooter, although that turned out not to be the case. To Professor Clug's family, his friends, his students, his UCLA colleagues and fellow Bruins, to all who love UCLA and all who love peace and harmony over violence and death dealing, this death has an immeasurable effect and was a tremendous loss. And it's at the hands of someone who had with him two semi-automatic pistols, multiple ammunition magazines, and loose rounds of ammunition indicating that he was prepared for further slaughter. He had evidently already killed his wife days earlier in Minnesota. His victim on Wednesday was William Clug, an engineering professor at UCLA who was only 39 years old when he was slain. He had attended UCLA as a graduate student, 1988 through 99, earning a master's degree in civil engineering. After earning his doctorate from Caltech in 2003, he returned to UCLA and joined the faculty at the Henry Samweli School of Engineering and Applied Science, and was promoted to a full professor last year. He specialized in computational biomechanics and the mechanics of biological systems such as cancer cells, and most recently worked with the UCLA Cardiac Modeling Group, using biometrics to help understand the electromechanics of the heart. He was the director of the Clug Research Group and received a very substantial National Science Foundation Career Award, a Samweli Teaching Award, and was a visiting scholar at both Caltech and USC. He previously worked on a project aimed at creating a better picture of the physics of cells, thereby helping to understand the life cycle of viruses, including HIV. We'll never know how many lives might have been saved in the years to come if he and we had been spared this violence and his life had continued, and if his teaching of others had continued. He was shot by a former doctoral student with an apparent grudge, although someone who was recently, as his 2013 doctoral dissertation, had expressed gratitude to Professor Clug for his help and support. Professor Clug was described by Chancellor Block as "respected, dedicated, and caring faculty member with wonderful gifts and talents that he shared generously at UCLA." A fellow professor called him "one of the most talented, intelligent, and caring of people, and a dear friend and great mentor to students." This kind of emphatic and sweet praise was echoed by many, many others on campus and off. Last night, that's what I heard over and over again, tearful but thankful words of appreciation expressed at the Candlelight Memorial Service held on campus for Professor Clug. He is survived by his wife, Mary Elise, children Timothy, age nine, and Rosemary, age seven. To them and all who suffer the sorrows and grievous losses caused by gun violence, we offer our profound condolences, and we join them in mourning for Professor Clug, and may he rest in peace.
Okay, thank you. So I'm continuing to look to my right. I now move to the left side, Mr. Sadio's side. Do not see any other adjourning motions, requests. Members, this meeting is adjourned.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
There's a huge connection with domestic violence.
Because I felt that, who's this, who's this man to put hands on me?